Good morning and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's now time for a meeting for public comment. And would you guys like to wait till Karen gets her?
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Yeah, we can do that. Having no other public comment, we will move to the adoption of the minutes of our last meeting.
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions, additions or deletions? Hearing none in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same signs, so ordered. Treasurer, noon.
We have receipts on January fifteenth and sixteenth of $1,318,974. That brought us to a total cash of $1,871,548.34. Our expenditures this week were $1,323,419.59. The tax claim is $20,813.87. So we have a balance of $527,314.86.
Move to approve the treasurer's report?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same signs, so ordered.
Yeah, one other thing here. We're opening an account for the London Valley Rail Trail Acquisition Fund, as it's called, and that's money that we received from the sale of the piece of land.
Jamie? You know, you'll recall, this goes back some time now, Evergreen Self-Storage, we transacted that piece of ground that's adjacent to the trail, backed by Evergreen Road, and $35,000 proceeds from that. And we agreed that that would just kind of roll over into use for the rail trail. If they're going to use it for future acquisition, or if we're going to use it for future acquisition on behalf of London Valley Rail Trail, and it's to count as match toward any future grants, it needs to be separate from regaling with any other funds. That's just one of DCR's requirements. So we'll just, as soon as we got the settlement checked, we'll just put it in the right place from the start. That's what it is.
Motion to accept that?
Yes, please.
Make a motion that we give the treasurer the latitude to deposit that check for rail trail.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same signs, so moved. Morning ladies. I'd like to introduce yourselves and then you may proceed.
Michelle Edgers, Director of Human Resources, Stephanie Noel, Benedict Corneille. This is her first time, so we have to be gentle. Under personnel transactions, under resignations and terminations, Sharon Haldeman, part-time court clerk, resignation effective January eighteenth. Melinda Kreider, teen clerk, resignation effective January seventh. Jessica Creed, our Deputy Administrator of MHIDEI, retirement effective March ninth. Dennis Good, Fiscal Operations Officer Three of MHIDEI, retirement effective March thirtieth. Brenna Saracini, Records Chief, retirement effective March fifteenth. Zachary Schlottman, Full-Time Correctional Officer, resignation effective January eighteenth. And Judy Uracek, General Clerk C, termination effective January eighth.
I make a motion to accept the different resignations and terminations as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to accept, which includes a lot of long-term loyal members of our family here. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same signs, so moved.
Under FMLA and leave of absence, Cynthia Lewis Morgan, from the Court Department, six to eight weeks of FMLA, effective December nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Patricia Shanks, Living Security, thirty days unpaid leave of absence, effective January second, two thousand and nineteen.
Make a motion to approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any comment? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same signs, so moved.
Under changes in status, transfers and promotions, I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the County of Lebanon and the APSME Union Council eighty-nine pertaining to the following: increased hiring rates to fourteen ninety-three per hour, the reclassification of six current full-time officer positions to three Lance Corporal positions with compensation of an additional one dollar per hour, and three private first class with compensation of an additional sixty-five cents per hour, percent increases for current full-time correctional officers, new wage scale for the remainder of the contract, and all changes will be effective retroactive to the beginning of the first pay for two thousand and nineteen, which was December thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved. And thank you for the negotiations. Well done.
I'll second. I'd just like to comment on this. It's just out of the ordinary where the employer makes extensions of increased wages and so on, and actually has it added to the contract. But this is something that becomes necessary when we have to meet the labor demands out there. We're competing with other employers in our community and competing with other counties around us for the same categories of employees, like prison officers. And, you know, we have the same issue with District Attorney's Office and so on. So we're, as a board, we're trying to be proactive, and I want to thank the Human Resources folks and Jamie for getting us to this point so that we're able to meet these needs. So appreciate everyone's effort there.
I think it's a continuation of our investment in retention and recruitment and in the safety of our employees to have the best that we can, we can have. We have a motion and a second. Anything else on that? If none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same signs, so moved.
Anna Devine, promotion from Aging Care Manager Two at Area Agency on Aging to Deputy Administrator at Area Agency on Aging at the rate of $2,591.68 by weekly, effective January twenty-eighth. Bradley Cypher, promotion from Deputy Sergeant in the Sheriff's Office to Lieutenant in the Sheriff's Office at the rate of $1,546.66 by weekly, effective January twenty-eighth.
Make a motion to approve those changes.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same signs, so moved.
Under other transactions, President Judge Tillwalk would like to hire Mary Griffith as a part-time jury attendant at the rate of $10.43 per hour, effective January twenty-second. And the prison would like to hire the following full-time correctional officers at the rate of $14.93 per hour, effective January twenty-second. The first is a rehire, Fine Bozeman. The following are new hires: Maryori Diaz, Mitchell Doughty, John Flint, Roseanne Ortiz, Austin Smith, and Cody Wieland. Renova would like to hire Urielli Gonzalez as a full-time developmental assistant at the rate of $11.56 per hour with a forty-five cent shift differential, effective January twenty-eighth. And Renova would like to hire Zumira Rivera as a full-time developmental assistant at the rate of $11.56 per hour with forty-five cent shift differential, effective January twenty-eighth. And voter registration would like to hire Dara Yaltz as a regular part-time general clerk C at the rate of $10.43 per hour, effective January twenty-eighth.
So moved.
Second?
It's moved and seconded that we ask the new additions to our staff. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same signs, so moved.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following: Clint Son, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of $16.56 per hour, effective January thirteenth.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that transaction. Any discussion? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same signs, so moved.
Under conference seminar request, under mandated, Keith Smith, Marjorie Olbert, Thomas Smith, Sharon Gassert, Anna Marquez, and Jessica McTavitt from Children and Youth would like to attend engagement families experiencing opioid use, addiction, and recovery in Mechanicsburg on February fifteenth. No registration fee, mileage, tolls, meals, reimbursement, three credits mandated by DHS. Sarah Hummel would like to attend the following forum from Children and Youth identifying child abuse and neglect in Mechanicsburg on February eleventh and twelfth. No registration fee, mileage, meals, tolls, reimbursement mandated by DHS. Second, in-home safety assessment and management in Mechanicsburg on February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth and March first. No registration fee, mileage, meals, tolls, reimbursement, eighteen credits mandated by DHS. Next, using interactional helping skills to achieve lasting change in Mechanicsburg on February twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second. No registration fee, mileage, meals, tolls, reimbursement, eighteen credits mandated by DHS. And last, introduction to PAA Child Welfare System in Mechanicsburg on February fifth. No registration fee, mileage, meals, and tolls reimbursement, six credits mandated by DHS. Erin Moyer and Elizabeth Getch from Children and Youth would like to attend Living the Mission of Child Welfare in Mechanicsburg on February fourth and fifth. No registration fee, mileage, meals, tolls, reimbursement, twelve credits mandated by DHS. Jody Boyd and Sarah Hummel from Children and Youth would like to attend CAPS New User Training in Mechanicsburg on January twenty-second. No registration fee, mileage, meals, and tools reimbursement, six credits mandated by DHS. Anna Marquez and Tyler Stein Snyder, Taylor Stein Snyder from Children and Youth would like to attend Turancy Prevention and Intervention in Mechanicsburg on February nineteenth. No registration fee, mileage, meals, and tools reimbursement, six credits mandated by DHS. Taylor Stein Snyder, Brian Rumper, and Keith Smith from Children and Youth would like to attend Conference Seminar on Heroin in Mechanicsburg on February twenty-fifth. No registration fee, mileage, meals, and tools reimbursement, six credits mandated by DHS. Brian Rumper and Mark Herr from Children and Youth would like to attend a gangs conference seminar in Mechanicsburg on February twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. No registration fee, mileage, meals, and tolls reimbursement, twelve credits mandated by DHS. Maria Hernandez from Children and Youth would like to attend Overview of Child Sexual Abuse in Mechanicsburg on February twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. No registration fee, mileage, meals, and tolls reimbursement, twelve credits mandated by DHS. John Schott from probation would like to attend UI Coordinator Conference in State College on May second and third. Zero dollar registration fee, lodging, and no reimbursement, six credits mandated by head-on. Susan Christenner from probation would like to attend SPEP Level Two Training, the Trainer Certification, in Harrisburg on March fourth and fifth. No registration fee, meals, and parking reimbursement, fourteen credits mandated by PCCP.
Second motion?
Make a motion that we approve all the mandated conferences as requested.
Second?
Have a motion and a second to have the well-read mandated conferences accepted. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same signs, so moved.
Under mandated, Sharon McMinn, Shannon McMinn from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend Healthy Steps for Older Adults in Bethlehem on March nineteenth and twentieth. No registration fee.
So moved.
Second?
A motion and a second to approve that request. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same signs, so moved. Thank you. Before we proceed with the agenda, maybe we can introduce our friends from Congressman Muser's office. We have Karen, Josh, and Denise with us.
Good morning.
Do we have one person that would like to say a few words?
Go ahead, Karen. We all are fortunate enough to work for the new Congressman Muser. Josh and Denise are going to be working primarily out of Berks County. I'm going to be at the Lebanon County. But we'll all be working well together, trying to help out, you know, all the constituents in the surrounding areas. As you know, our district is pretty big. So we're looking forward to working with everyone and hopefully, you know, be a positive face in the community.
Thank you for stopping by, and please give the Congressman our regards.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I do have a question. Where is your office going to be in Lebanon?
I'm going to be with, sharing the office with Frank Ryan. Have a little area there.
And I don't even know, is that the one in Palmyra? Or where does he have his office?
In Palmyra, right on four twenty-two.
Is there an address?
There isn't an address. I'm sorry. Don't know off the top of my head. I can get that for you.
Okay, sure. That's out of my, I've never been to Ryan's office. It's not my district, so.
Yeah.
Do you have a business card? I'm Michael Anderson, voter registration. We get a lot of questions about how people can contact you because they call us because they don't know. So I can give you my business card, and if you don't mind, maybe touch your base with me?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay, great. I'll be too. I haven't yet. Yeah, not a problem. I understand.
Yeah, but I can give you my contact information in Berks County as well, since they're not, they're actually not actually up and running yet.
Okay.
So we're, we're sort of working like hybrid out of Popsville at the moment. Yeah.
Yes, yes.
You were the one boarding Carol.
Good morning. I'm Carol Davies. I am Administrator of the Area Agency on Aging, and I have two items to present to the Commissioner's to their consideration this morning. First of all, we have a list of sixteen contract amendments for our two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen fiscal year. These increase total expenditures by forty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. Included in the increases is a two percent cost of living allowance for our providers, which the state allows us to give. There is money available within the Area Agency on Aging budget to support these costs, so we are not requesting any additional funding from the county officials to fund these amendments.
Second motion then to?
Make a motion to approve the contract amendments as presented.
Second motion?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same signs, so moved.
Thank you. The second I might have for consideration today is an amendment to our contract with Aging Well Pennsylvania. This is a three-year contract from July first, two thousand and eighteen, that ends on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one. And we executed the contract earlier this, well, actually, last calendar year in order to pay for assessments that the Area Agency on Aging will do. And in this contract, we assume that we will be using a new tool that the state designed called the FED. However, the state is not ready to release this tool called the FED, so we continue to use the old assessment tool. Since the old assessment tool is more comprehensive and takes more time to do, this amendment would increase the rate we're paid in consideration of the extra work that it takes to do this particular work. So this would be effective until the FED form would be approved and utilized.
I'll make a motion to approve the use of the old tool until the new one's available.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we amend that contract. Any comment or question? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you have a question?
She's perplexed. She's reading my face pretty well.
Anything else, Carol?
No. Do you want me to just leave it for you?
I just have a comment, or maybe we have, we have a few minutes here with Carol. If she could just maybe spend a minute on the ratings that Conawal put out on Protective Services. They sort of did some measuring and some grading of counties on success or the effectiveness of those programs. And it was a, it was a green, yellow, red.
Yes.
Kind of the scoring. And we remained in the green.
Yes, we were evaluated in March of two thousand and eighteen. The county had entered, or the state had introduced this rating system in, I believe, the fall of two thousand and seventeen. And it turned to be evaluated, came up in March of two thousand and eighteen. And we were evaluated with this system and did receive the green ranking, which means that there were some minor things to be adjusted, but most importantly, that no individuals were left at risk through the provision of these services.
Four counties, I'm not trying to single them out, but four counties were, I guess, had red.
Four counties were red, and if a, if a county was in the red range, then the state worked with them to improve their, their rating so that they could move up. And then based on the type of rating a county received, then that would determine how soon the next evaluation work would be done.
I think it's commendable because that's a difficult, it's a twenty-four-hour-a-day need sometimes, calls on the weekends and so on. And it's just, it's just a tough spot. It's not unlike the Children and Youth information and so on.
Yes, these, the people that are evaluated in Protective Services are, are the most vulnerable. It's for adults that are at risk of being abused, neglected, abandoned, or exploited. And the number of cases we have seen in recent years has, I think, quadrupled in the last three or four years. So it's really a significant effort that we do, and our staff is really dedicated and committed to finding a solution for these people and keeping them safe.
Well, thank you to you and all the staff at the Area Agency on Aging for a job. Well done.
Thank you.
Shows teamwork.
You're good.
Actually, two questions. On present topic, what, what sort of criteria did they use to establish the ratings, Carol?
There were a number of things that they looked at, and I can't tell you all off the top of my head, but they, they select a percentage of cases to review, and they kind of review those cases from start to finish to see if it followed regulations, to see if the adult was left at risk. And really, that's the most important thing, to ensure that the person was not left at risk.
And I assume that FED is an acronym?
Sorry. Functional Eligibility Determination.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Nothing else? Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol. Michael's on the agenda next. Do you want to go to the ten o'clock for that, or should I fill it or you just go? So this is, and this is an election board question.
So as Chairman of the Election Board, I'd like to now call the Election Board to order, and our Director will have some things to present to the board.
Good morning. Michael Anderson, Chief Voter Registration, Director of Elections. The maps, I did bring maps. So the reason why I am before the board today is asking permission to the board to file the petition to do redistricting of our election districts. The proposal is to split our five largest voter-registered election districts in, we'd say half, but basically to split them from five to ten. And in that proposal, as I have given to you, those precincts are Cornwall, Jackson West, North Cornwall North, South Lunedary Campbelltown, and Swetera. So those are the ones that we have targeted as having a very high number of registered voters. And in this proposal, you'll see where we have elected, how we would like to rename them, how would we like to split them, what the approximate number of registered voters would be in that, if we do go ahead with this petition. And then behind you is the maps that actually show, and I can bring this forward if you would like. I have smaller versions here of actually how that will look when we do split that. So basically, and then I also did a verbal description of what the boundary lines would be as well. So that information I have with me. Unfortunately, our solicitor wasn't able to be here this morning. He would have the actual petition that would be filed. As soon as I have a copy, obviously, we'll give that to you. But I am here to request to actually have that filed with the Court of Common Pleas because that would easily be approved by a judge for that after, obviously, the board agrees for that to go forward.
And walk through, walk through some of the numbers?
Yeah, we can, if you, if you want to go through some of the numbers. I would just make a general statement that the move to do this, the Board of Elections and the Commissioners, of course, and our Director had some concerns after the last presidential elections. I know personally, I can speak to South Lunedary. We were out there very late getting folks in that were waiting in line across the parking lot now to the, the street to get in to vote. We knew that we had to take some steps. So Michael's been very, very proactive and found new polling places and got the whole thing in order. And what this, we're dealing with today is a petition to have this filed with the court, with the judge, to approve this.
If you don't mind, I would like to say, you know, we, we went into this process looking at twenty nineteen, or excuse me, twenty eighteen, as doing county-wide redistricting. So I, I don't want it to think, okay, if you were number six on the list, we're like, oh, well, you're fine. It was actually part of our goal to look at countywide this past year. Kind of what happened was the directive to have new voting systems that was put in place by the Governor to be in place for this year. So when that occurred, it was kind of, we had two things going on at once. And so I had presented the idea of looking at the top five to do something about those immediately, and then we will address the others in the future.
Thanks, too.
Yeah, so it's kind of, exactly. I think that's the best way to look at it. This is not the end of it. I think that we need to do a better job of making sure we're looking at this going forward, that the population moves, shifts, increases in our county, and so that everybody has, you know, what happened in South Lunedary Campbelltown is absolutely a cold fortune that will happen again. So it's something we definitely will make sure going forward. We're very active about. So, you know, as this goes out, I don't want people to think that we didn't think about the other locations that we know that have a large number. It's just that we had to focus, kind of had to set our, what would we, what did we think we could definitely accomplish now and then kind of move forward? Did you want me to do some of the numbers? I didn't know what we officially did.
Yeah, you could just, the offset, what it's going to do.
Sure, okay. So I just went in alphabetical order. So basically, with Cornwall, they had roughly three thousand, five hundred and eighty, well, roughly three thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven registered voters. And so we are looking to have that split to what we are going to consider a Cornwall North, which would stay at the Sacred Heart Parish Center, which is the current polling location. And that would be roughly two thousand, one hundred and thirty-one registered voters. And a Cornwall South. We had some issues looking for polling locations in the South, so we, at this point, have talked to the Cornwall United Methodist Church about possibly filling that location. And just so it's known, basically, what we did with this is that we have just got interest from these individuals in these locations. We have to do a whole survey. Myself and my staff will go out there. We have a whole HAVA, Help America Vote Act, survey that we will need to fill out. So these are just people that have, locations that have expressed an interest, and we still have to work through some of the details with that. So I did want to make sure that that was clear. But basically, then, that location would be one thousand, four hundred and fifty-six registered voters. In Cornwall, excuse me, Jackson West, right now, we have four thousand, thirty-nine registered voters. And this was as of the election. These are the, the numbers that we had on Election Day of two thousand and eighteen. So we did that roughly right after we were able to finish everything up. Jackson North would be created, and so West would be split in two. So we would have a, a Jackson North, which would become the voting at the Cootstown Fire Company. That registered number of voters would be one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three. And then we would still continue to have a Jackson West, which would still vote at the Jackson Township Building. That number would be two thousand, three hundred and six. Then we would have North Cornwall North. Right now, the registered voters in that district is two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one. We would create, we would continue to have North Cornwall North, still voting at the North Cornwall Township Building. Registered voters would drop to one thousand, four hundred and seventy. And then we would create a North Cornwall West, which they would vote at the Faith Baptist Church on Twenty-Second Street, and that registered voter number would be one thousand, three hundred and sixty-one. South Lunedary Campbelltown would be split. And basically, what we're going to be doing here is renaming all three election districts in, in South Lunedary. So right now, Campbelltown has four thousand, four hundred and thirty-five registered voters. We would make a South Lunedary North. They would vote at the Community Bible Church on Forge Road. That number would be two thousand, three hundred and forty. and forty. South Londonderry Middle, which would then be considered the old Campbelltown, that would still be at the Campbelltown Fire Company. The registered number of voters there would be two thousand ninety-five. And then we would change the name for South Londonderry Lawn to South Londonderry South, just to kind of keep our naming mechanism the same. And they would have one thousand one hundred and ninety registered voters there. And then last would be Swetara. Registered voters, two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five. We would create South, excuse me, Swetara North, which would continue to vote at the Swetara Township Building. One thousand two hundred and forty-four registered voters. And then we would have a Swetara South, which would be the Bumper Hill Fire Company on Moore Road. And the registered voters would be one thousand seven hundred and twenty.
Let me, that we adopt these changes and bring our number of precincts in phase one to sixty.
Correct. To be exact on the motion, the, to include filing a petition with the court as the election.
Well, second.
I'll second the motion and also again say thank you. I know how much work this has been. You've been under a lot of pressure and it, it was needed. We were the last in a state, as was mentioned earlier, to turn in our, our results from our last presidential election. I mean, and people wondered what was going on. It was just, we had so many voters, which is a good thing, but they didn't understand that.
Absolutely.
So this is going to correct that.
Absolutely.
Too much of a good thing.
Yes.
Can't have that.
Correct.
All right. Any other discussion or questions? If not, I'll, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving this and having it forward to the courts indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Anything else? Come before the board.
I thought it was what I had.
I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All right. We're adjourned.
And I'll leave the map publication.
Thank you, Michael.
Michael, I did have a suggestion.
Yes.
Where you have north, south, east, west, where you have three districts with the same number. Could you possibly show the voting district in that third one? Because one it is, one it isn't. It's not consistent.
I'm sorry, I'm not following.
The little red dots that show you where they go to vote.
Okay. Yes.
Because if it's all the same numbered district, like all Campbelltown, South Londonderry, for instance, each municipality, it's a little confusing. If I were a voter looking at that, well, where's my voting district? Do I have to go to one of these other two? I, I think showing off three dots would be good, even though they're not being petitioned.
To give you an example, I think, of what she's referring, the Jackson map shows where Jackson North polling place is. It shows where Jackson West polling place is. But even though there aren't any changes to Jackson East, it doesn't, it doesn't locate the Jackson East polling place.
Oh, okay. Because it's actually not a full map of Jackson East. But I can have that available, absolutely. Because part of what I was going to do was to reach out to the townships and have these maps posted. So for instance, if, in Jackson, there will be three districts. So we would give them the map for what these three splits will be and then also include Jackson East and have that dot. So yes, I can do that. I am.
I just think it would visually make it a lot more clear to all the voters in that precinct and district.
And I do want to thank G I S, or I should have said that earlier, that have been very, very helpful in getting these maps and working with me and through visions and things like that. So, yes.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So let me go ahead. So you want me to walk through some of the items I have here. All right. First item I have, annually, the county is required to submit to the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture a certification of funds available for farmland preservation. The Department of Ag that takes that number and essentially combine all of the certification numbers from across the state. And then they divide up the available funds that the Commonwealth has among those entities equally, whether it be a dollar for dollar or cents on the dollar or more than a dollar in some cases. So we have for twenty nineteen, a certification of two hundred and thirty-two thousand seventy-two dollars available. And that includes seventy-five thousand dollars from the general fund that you have approved to go toward farmland preservation. It includes forty-two thousand five hundred from the Marcellus Shale that you have allocated toward farmland preservation, approximately eighty-six thousand dollars in municipal, county municipal and private donations that they gathered to put toward easements. And then eighteen thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars of clean and green rollback funds that are also eligible to be used for that. So all of those things added up comes to the two thirty-two seventy-two. Ask for your action on that certification.
The motion to certify the two hundred and thirty-two thousand and seventy-two dollars of farmland preservation for twenty nineteen.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Jane, does it mention the number, the new number of acreage, acres that are preserved? We don't have any of that. If there's nothing else, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. So move.
All right. I've got some appointments to, to advisory boards that are under your authority, first being the Lebanon County Health Facilities Authority. I've been informed that Robert Funk of Lebanon has agreed and is willing to serve another term, another five-year term on that authority, which will take him to December fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three. If you're willing to make a motion to appoint Robert Funk for another term.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That would make that appointment. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. So move.
The Housing Authority, County Lebanon, Mr. Richard Randall has been serving on that authority since two thousand seventeen, when he was appointed to fill out the remaining term of, Neva Leven, who had passed away back then. He's indicated that he's willing to serve now a full five-year term on the Housing Authority Board. He meets, this would be a, a resident slot on the board, and he meets that criteria since he's President Stevens Towers. So they're recommending his reappointment.
I'll say move to reappoint Randall, Richard Randall, to the Housing Authority Board.
Second.
Motion and second. Any question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. So move.
I have, for the Lebanon County Community Action Partnership, I have contracts for M A T P driver for Laurel La Fever, for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program with the previously adopted schedule of fees. Make a motion to approve the, that additional driver for medical transport.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. So move.
I have a proposed amendment to an agreement of sale to present to you. And we discussed this a couple of weeks ago in an executive session. And now I'm bringing forth the results of that discussion for your approval at an open meeting. You'll recall this, the piece of property the county owns that is adjacent to the driver's center, adjacent and, and behind the driver's center down off of East Walnut Street. We've been for almost, I guess, a little two years now, in a, in a sales agreement with Aspen Hill Partnership for the purchase of that property. Originally, they had made an offer of seven hundred thousand dollars for approximately four acres with options on that agreement to extend the agreement in incremental versus five thousand dollar extensions and then some ten thousand dollar extensions while they conduct due diligence on access and liability of the property and so on. We went through two cycles of, of extensions and at this point, they have deposited forty-five thousand dollars in extension fees to keep them to the time, to up to now. They would like to get an extension to the end of June with the county because they're just still working with their engineers on some access issues and frankly, just overall due diligence yet. So their proposal is, instead of buying that time, so to speak, or literally, I guess, through, through deposits for extension, their proposal is to, is to offer a second amendment to the agreement of sale, which would increase the purchase price of the property to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They would then have to execute that by the end of June. If they do not execute it, then all of the forty-five thousand dollars that has been held in escrow for the extensions that were executed, that were, that were given earlier would be the county's to keep. So for the, for the, for the trouble of giving them that time and so on. Prior to this most recent negotiation, again, we were at seven hundred thousand dollars. Forty-five thousand dollars was our deposit. Of that forty-five thousand, twenty thousand of it was not applicable to the purchase price. And the other twenty-five thousand was going to be applicable to the seven hundred thousand. They've changed that, saying now if they don't execute it, all of the forty-five thousand is the county's. If they do execute it, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the county's. So you actually gain another thirty thousand dollars in, in proceeds. So that's where we are. And I'm trying to answer any questions, but I think you understand the proposal.
I'll second the motion.
I'll make a motion and I'd just like to comment that.
Here, we have a second.
Second motion.
I'd like to comment that I appreciate the increased offer. I think it's fair because of the amount of time and also to make sure that that wetland is divided off and preserved. That is part of something that I insist upon moving forward. And I had seen nothing to try and whittle out of that. So I, I'm pleased with the company. I think they're doing a really good thing.
Yeah, that still remains part of the original set. This does not amend any, any of those controls. It's only one of the characteristics that's amended through this.
Anything else? What, really? I'm good. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. So move.
I've got some exemption requests for, for property tax exemption for eligible veterans, first being for Carol Howser of Virgin Avenue, Lebanon, disabled veteran, and Tony Payton of Sheridan Avenue of Andrew, who would both method requirements.
Make a motion to approve the tax relief for the two veterans.
Second the motion.
The only motion is second to approve those exemptions. Any questions or comment? Here, if none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. So move.
The last item I have is a proclamation to, to support the Thirty-First Annual Swetara Canoe and Clean Up Sojourn, May fourth and fifth, two thousand nineteen. Storm drains, through storm drains, trash enters the Swetara Creek, which ends up in tributaries, eventually in Swetara. Through participation, public awareness, the communication among watershed groups and governments are enhanced, enhanced. Therefore, this proclamation would recognize the efforts to clean the water and stand on my sojourns.
Respectfully abstained since I'm involved in the sojourn.
Make a motion to approve the proclamation, adopt the proclamation, sorry.
I, I won't say so.
I'll second the. I'll second the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I did not. I'm sorry. That was wrong. It wasn't, yes, I did.
So to the one in favor.
One abstention.
One abstention, right. Correct? Jane, is this, this far enough along to announce that?
I suppose so. Yeah, I mean, it was discussed last week in the public workshops.
Do you want to just mention that? Because there's been some confusion about when.
Sure. This, this kind of goes back to the elections.
Yes.
Subject earlier, but yeah, I can speak to it if you'd like. Last week, Kathleen, Catherine Brookbar was here from the Pennsylvania Department of State. She has, I think, since been promoted to Secretary of Department of State. It wasn't exactly last week, but I think she's, yeah. To just talk about the, the upcoming change in election systems that obviously has been mandated on counties and so on. And during that discussion, the question came up of whether, of when a candidate becomes a candidate. And the issue with that is that commissioners must select a new voting system by the end of two thousand nineteen to be implemented in two thousand twenty at the latest. And with many of the commissioners across the Commonwealth planning to be candidates for office, the election board would then be, there would be an alternate election board appointed. Since this is an election board decision, the question is, can the election board, as it stands, as it's comprised currently, make that decision? Or does the alternate election board make a decision on it? And when does that happen? So that's really the question is, is at what point in time does an individual become a candidate and therefore no longer eligible to sit on the election board? So that is the timing of these decisions, of this decision on election systems can be made. So the Department of State and the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania were working together to come up with an opinion on that and, and share that with counties. So the counties can, can make their own decisions based on it. And what they have decided, and it's going to be coming out of a formal memo, but Secretary Brookbar has forwarded this to us in the meantime, since it was a question last week. What they have decided is that when a commissioner files a petition and the related documents, that is the time at which they become an official candidate for office. And therefore, that is the latest time that a substitute board of elections should be appointed. The open window for filing of petitions is February nineteenth to the deadline of March twelfth. Petitions can be filed anytime in between there. So if, if a candidate, for example, files on February twenty-second, it's that date that they become a candidate, according to this definition, the opinion of the Department of State and C cap. So that's the bottom line to it. You know, there were different, there were different views being bandied around that it was when a person announces, it's when the petitions begin to circulate, or some other. So anyway, this is, this is the opinion of the Department of State, C cap. If that's what you want.
So are we going to move to get this decision on the agenda for the election board in the near future? Then is that the intention?
Whatever your wishes are. Your next meeting is February seventh.
I certainly don't want to wait until after the, after the election. So, you know.
After the petition.
Well, no, we would have to wait.
Oh, right.
After the election.
After the November election. If you're all ready candidates.
Right. It's just, you know, we have a very short window there.
Right.
And especially if we need to place the order for the equipment and so on and have it here in time. So I think we need to take that action now before we, the three of us become candidates. So that our commissioners acting as a board of elections can make that decision.
If that's, if that's your wish, then, you know, the next opportunity would be February seventh. Is your next.
Folks agree with that?
Well, I guess my, my intention was just to clarify when we become. But now that the other issue, as Bill has raised, Jane, I thought there was precedent for the Board of Commissioners, not the Election Board, to be, you know, voting on. Is that cleared up yet?
There, yes, there was. But I believe that the, that the opinion at this point, and it's also from your solicitor, is the opinion of the, it's an election board decision.
There are some records where it was the Board of Commissioners, but they, they claimed that was an error.
Okay. I'll send them back. So that's good. All right. That, that takes care. Then we can talk about the date that we.
So February seventh would be a good date to maybe pick the machines and, and adopt this from the state? Is that what you're talking about?
That's a question.
Yeah, that would be, I mean, if it's February seventh, or your next meeting following that, would be within the petition filing period. So it's possible someone could have filed prior to that. However, likely that is, but. Not likely that is, but it's a possibility. I think we should do it on the seventh.
Let's tentatively.
I appreciate the clarity because a lot of people ask me when we're going to make the decisions. I'm happy that we set a date.
I'll let Michael know, and I think at this point, he's forwarded to you everything he's had on the issues, everything he's compiled on the issues. So at this point, it's, it's for you to contemplate and prepare for the seventh. All right?
Thank you.
Okay. Am I ready for planning?
Are they here?
They're there. Would you like to introduce yourselves, and then you may proceed.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is John Fitzie. I'm with the Lebanon County Planning Department.
Julie Jane, Department of County Planning Department.
Like, thank you guys this morning for the opportunity to present with you a resolution that we're working on. To provide a little bit of background, this is relative to a request for proposals that we have put out in the middle of December, looking to bring on a transportation planning consultant. As you guys, you know, remember, we had Mr. Tom Coke Day, who worked with us for a number of years. And relative to the NPO, there are three critical documents that we are required to update on several regular bases, and one of which is the long-range transportation plan, which needs to be updated every four years. For those of you that may not remember, our original long-range plan was developed as a component of our County Comprehensive Plan. And the last major update that we had was in twenty sixteen. And what we're looking at doing, especially with the newness of a lot of our staff, I had the opportunity to meet with Commissioner Letts to sort of review this resolution that we had before you to discuss some of the particulars, and I think outlining, you know, why this is so critical, given the change that has occurred at the federal level when it comes to the use of state and federal dollars for transportation plans. So we, we have a resolution here for a, to award a five-year master agreement that would be with WSP, they were the firm that had submitted. To provide some background as well, members of WSP were actually involved in our original development of our first long-range transportation plan. So they're very familiar with the county. I think they would provide us with very good support. And the idea will be is it will be a master agreement that will be open for five years, where we will develop specific work orders in order for us to make the major updates that we'll have to do to the long-range plan that must be completed by June of twenty twenty. So within the next year and a half, we will be looking at updating that document. And what we had before is a resolution authorizing them as our transportation planning consultant for the planning department and to assist our department in doing this initiative and various other activities with transportation.
Question, could we include a little bit about pricing in here?
I mean, typically, all of this will be worked through the Planning's Work Program. As, as work orders, the staff will review all of those. There's not a set amount. This process, as I explained to Julie, is, is new. It's something that the department does utilize. We wouldn't go above and beyond what we have within our existing Unified Planning Work Program that provides services for our staff. We, we do that by individual work orders. They would, we would ask them for a price proposal that we have, but it allows us to not constantly have to go out for approvals for different items again and again. It allows us to go directly to that consultant and ask for items. And we would, we would have the final say when it comes to what work order moves forward and what would be taken out, maybe as in a case of, if there are certain elements for the plan that we can utilize staff as like Jamie and G I F, or we can do in-house tools. We would use that, and we will have to have a consultant do that.
Could we have an attachment with what the current parameters are? I just am kind of uncomfortable with nothing in here about pricing. It feels like an open checkbook.
Do you have rates?
Rates, yeah.
I mean, that would be part of, this resolution would, would basically precipitate before we get a master agreement in place, which we'll be doing as the next phase.
So this is the first step. You don't have an agreement with rates at this point.
No.
To open the door to.
Is that to negotiate?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right, I understand.
Yeah, we wouldn't give them, with no rates, no nothing, that would fall as part of our market.
Yeah, it didn't feel right. Okay. Thank you. Then I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for Penn Dot Connect's policy and hiring a consultant.
Second, if you want to name the consultant in your motion.
WSP.
All right, I'll second the motion.
Motion and second. Motion and second. Any questions on the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, so move.
Thank you very much. Thank you both.
Let's see your Eagles shirt on there.
Isn't it long?
Would you like to introduce yourself and proceed?
Sure. Good morning, I'm Kevin Trum. I'm the administrator of Lebanon County Mental Health Intellectual Disability Early Intervention Program. I have two items that I would like to present today. The first being the contracting issues with our Health Choices Program. As you know, that is the managed care program for people with behavioral issues. Includes mental health and drug and alcohol. We've been part of this program for about twenty years now, I believe. And the contract format is being proposed to change. It's simply a matter of structure. What we've done for the past twenty years was, we have a five-county collaborative, the Capital Area Behavioral Health Collaborative. We've contracted individually with Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Department of Human Services, to, to manage the Health Choices Funds and the Health Choices Program. And then we have a collaborative, again, Capital Area Behavioral Health Collaborative, C A B A C. That is our corporation that manages the money and the program. The contract change is somewhat simple. It's instead of each of the five counties contracting with the Department of Human Services, it would be turned around, and the Capital Area Behavioral Health Collaborative would be the contractor for those services. And then we would have the agreement with the Capital Area Behavioral Health Collaborative to manage the program. On a daily basis, from a programmatic basis, and funding basis, and lines of authority basis, nothing will change. We had wanted to do this many years ago, but Commonwealth didn't want to do it, and now they're encouraging it. There are some positive impacts of it. It, it helps us to meet deadlines in a much quicker way. Instead of each county having to go to their commissioners for some of the small details, it can be done at a capital, at a C A B A C level, so we can meet deadlines better. It will reduce some of our costs for consultants and bank fees doing this one group instead of five. And what it does also is assure adequacy of what they call I M D adjustments. In the past, that weren't always met due to the rates capped by county. We can get a higher rate on the I M D adjustments by, because the numbers are calculated for the five-county group instead of the single county. And we can consolidate a lot of analysis and reporting requirements by doing this. Our solicitor for the five-county group, Lawrence Tabus, he's recommended we do it. He's analyzed the agreement. We think it makes sense. You may recall back in September, I was here discussing this briefly because at that point, we had to submit a letter of intent, which was not binding, but it just showed that we were intending to move forward with this process. And now we're coming to completion of the process. The process requires an ordinance, and I've been working with Jamie and David Warner to get the ordinance in place, and that I believe is being advertised currently. But at this point, we would need the approval of the commissioners, and then we would wait the duration of the advertising period. And at that point, is that when the commissioners actually take the vote?
They would adopt the ordinance.
At that point, yes.
If you need a, if you need an agreement, you need action on the agreement, and then also they would have to take action to adopt the ordinance.
That's the way I understood it.
It's being advertised next week. It has to be advertised within seven days. It's on the agenda for the seventh of February. So we do not vote on it? Not the ordinance. We agree, it's a collaborative agreement. All right, I'll make a motion that we adopt the collaborative.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question or comment for Kevin? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, so move.
I do have two signature papers for that. And the second item I have for today is, again, our routine provider contract amendments for our mental health I D E I programs. Again, we do this routinely as the needs of the individuals change or as their choices of providers change. Normally, we wait until we have several more, but we had one that was significant, and, and we will not, we will not pay for those services until the commissioners have already then approved that. The total number of changes to contracts for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen is six, and the total change in the cost for the contract is thirty-six thousand five hundred forty-six dollars.
Forty-eight or forty-six?
Forty-eight. My, my summary says thirty-six five forty-six.
Yeah, I see on the chart it's forty-six, but on the cover it's forty-eight. So I wondered which it was.
It's probably forty-six. I was going to say, the cover was written by me, so that was probably wrong.
Go with the list.
Okay.
The, the chart you're looking at is an Excel spreadsheet, which would do, you know, the automatic summary to, so.
Don't want to drive the accountant nuts.
You're making up numbers again, Kevin.
Yes. Whatever I gotta do, Kevin. So the number on the cover sheet is incorrect, and the number on, on the chart is correct. It's thirty-six thousand five hundred forty-six dollars. And I, I would know, you know, the majority of that increase, the twenty-four thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars is in our intellectual disabilities program. We had an individual who's a caretaker dying. There were, we wanted family members to take care of that individual and provide services, so we had to quickly add an increment so to ensure the health and safety of the individual. We do have all the funds within our existing budget. We are not looking for the commissioners to fund any of this additional thirty-six thousand five hundred forty-six dollars.
We require a clarification. I so move to approve the provider contract amendments.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I'm never worried about his numbers as much as I am that when you retire, make sure wherever your successor is gets your acronym collection.
I have a, I have a, an online directory that has, I think, about sixty-four pieces of various acronyms. Some of them are outdated, and I add to it almost weekly. Wow. Just remarkable.
You're on, you're on.
What are you going to do with that, then, when you retire?
Pop it right in self.
Well, Kevin leaves us one more thing. I've got three appointments to the M H I D E I Advisory Board. Copy of that is circulated with you. So the nominating committee of the advisory board is recommending the following for three-year term reappointments to twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one for Jonathan Johnson, Dr. Mackenzie Walker, Reverend Allen Smith, and Bonnie.
Pete Track. Pete Track.
Pete Track, thank you. Make a motion to reappoint the four members.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we make those appointments. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, so move.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Enjoy the snow.
And last item on the agenda, you're down to one assessment appeal, add one to.
One at one thirty, okay.
Very good.
Motion going.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all.